And go into you, Mr. Chair. Okay, I'd like to open our meeting, it's, uh, December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, at, uh, six twenty-six, if you could stand in the position. Uh, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we got a six fifteen, um, but if I could, just like the move for warrants first. Do now, yeah, okay, payroll warrant, uh, PW fourteen dash twenty-four, for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-one and nineteen cents. Second half on the paper, right? Bill warrant, DW fourteen dash twenty-three, for five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two and sixteen. Second half on the paper. Right? And deduction warrant, last one, DW fourteen dash twenty-two A, for a total of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty and forty-seven. Second half on the paper. Right? Thanks, Kenos. All right, we had a six fifteen, but, um, Mike Dempsey wanted to, uh, give you the floor.
Okay.
You have until six thirty?
Wait.
All right, so, I'm here to talk about the problem that I'm sure you're aware of that exists down there on Lower Center Street. And, uh, they have an ongoing problem with beavers there, and the reason being is, couple of reasons. We know that beavers are active throughout our town, but down there, uh, there's a small culvert that is constantly getting blocked. And it's on the little pond that's across the street from Johnson's Pond. So, uh, about, uh, three years ago, we asked Bob to submit a notice of intent, and he did. And we put together a maintenance plan, a five-year maintenance plan, uh, that's been working out pretty well. It gives Bob some direction on what we want him to do down there. But this ongoing problem of the, the culvert getting clogged, uh, ha- really hasn't been solved. It ha- it's still going on and seems to be, you know, a regular, ongoing problem. So, um, what we thought about was, is there a solution to this? We've, we've, um, looked into this before, but, um, never did anything about it. So we came up with, uh, a couple of quotes for beaver deceiver type, type products that might be able to, uh, solve the problem. The, the idea that we had is, you know, we've had, we have beaver problems throughout the town. Again, as you know, Bob does a good job of following up on them. Usually what we have to do is Bob gets a trapper and it reaches a critical state. And they, they may trap the beavers, but they usually end up, um, opening up the dam, you know, and it requires special permits to do this, it requires the money to hire the trapper, et cetera. So, um, what we thought was, this site might be a good site to test this product. Bob, I want Bob to tell us a little bit about why he thinks this may or may not be a good idea. But the commission feels that we could, uh, you know, reduce the overall costs of, uh, maintenance in dealing with the beaver problems. Of course, we don't have our own budget to do this, so it's, the, the estimated cost is somewhere between twelve forty and fourteen forty. There's an annual maintenance fee that goes along with it. And, uh, so we are asking your assistance in trying to figure out how could we put this test project into place.
Mike, could I have a copy of?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You're on, Bob.
I, yeah, well, I have, uh, I have a problem, I don't think it's gonna work.
Okay.
Because of, I've talked to a trapper that's been in the business forty years. And he wrote me a, uh, back in two thousand ten, he wrote me a scenario of the problem out there. And o- obviously, he wants to continue trapping beavers, but most of the property's in Haverhill. That's out of our jurisdiction.
Now, didn't Bob Wood say he was gonna install a beaver deceiver up there?
No, he didn't, he just put a screen up and it didn't work.
Oh.
It was worse than ever.
Okay.
So, um, right now, the water's, we maintain it all the time, and the water's way down, the level's down. And like the trapper has told me in his report, that they'll still, um, cut trees down, even with the beaver deceiver. The beavers will still, you know, ruin the landscape area, they'll still, uh, destroy the trees. So, I think the property owner, that the problem that keeps complaining to the conservation, should hire a trapper.
Because the problem's on his property?
Problem's on his property. That's where the beaver house is at. And he's, lives in Haverhill, that's the problem.
We, we check all the, at least once a week, sometimes depending on what we're doing, it's usually, once a week, we check all the spots. We have spots other than that one that are way worse than that one. We go out there and check that thing, he, he'll be calling, emailing, whatever he does lately. Go out there, he's complaining because the beaver pushed the little mud up. Most times, six, eight inches up against the screen we have there. The water's below the culvert, so even if you take the mud up, the water's not gonna go in the pipe. Beavers just do that because, you take it down, he's gonna be there next night putting it right back up. You leave it alone, he leaves it alone, there's no water flow going through there, regardless of whether the beaver dams there or not. All the pipes out there right now have no water flow going through them, the water table's so low. Even out there maintaining everything, there's no problem. If you leave it there, he doesn't mess with it, and you're not messing with everything around it. It just maintains. When it gets high, we go out there, pull the screen up, put it back in, and it's fine. Beaver deceivers, you give him three sides now to bury, there, and they got a pipe going out. One thing with that pond right now, that pond is so filled in with silt, you can see the great blue herons standing out there, and most of their legs are out of the ground. There's hardly any water table there. So that works on a big pipe going up farther from underneath where the dam is, so you can still always have water drafting through. That ain't gonna work there. And it just creates a nightmare for trying to clean it, because you've got three sides you can't reach now.
Right.
That's what happened with the one that, Haverhill didn't do actual beaver deceiver, but they did the general concept of the three screens. They couldn't maintain it, they took it up. We have a screen right in front of the pipe, we can walk up to it, unhook it, pick it up, shake the stuff out on the side of the pile, put it back in, and stop.
Few days later, plugs up again.
The next day, we come back the next day and it's the same thing, but if you leave it alone, he doesn't mess with it, it stays the same height. And there's a water issue out there, after a big rain, we go around for all the rainstorms, make sure everything's full. The water table's never been high out there, unless it's a hundred year storm that we get every five, six years. And that's the only time that pond rises, any of those ponds rise up there. We got problems at Uptak, Salem Street spillways got a problem, Bear Hill, we got just about nipped this year. Washington Street, they're starting to build one at the bottom of Easy Park, they're starting to build one there all the time. There's a regular, I mean, these guys can go out all day sometime, that's all they do, mess with the beavers. Springtime, that's all, all we do, all week.
Yeah, that's my point, right there, is that, you know, there's many, many sites in, in town.
There is, there's water, anyplace there's water.
And I don't dispute the highway department at all, they are fantastic at doing their job. But, you know, when that water is high over there on Center Street, it is a problem. Bob keeps logs of when he has to send people out there, so we know that, you know, they do a regular visit thing. Especially when the water's high, you gotta clean it out.
Right, but the water never gets that high there, that's the problem. This guy keeps calling and calling and calling, you go out there, and the water isn't even going through the pipe. He sees the mud pushed up there and he wants to call somebody. That's been the problem all along, like I said, this spot's Bear Hill Road. We have to go out there with a machine every time, every day, for weeks.
Yeah.
And that's where there's a water problem, nobody's calling and complaining about it though.
Well, see, that's my point, is that if we can test this kind of device on a site.
We don't need to test it, it's just gonna be a waste of money that we don't need to spend, we are maintaining it now.
It is guaranteed to work, and if you do the maintenance on it, it's supposed to work.
Let me ask this, if we were putting this in, whose property is it on?
It's on town property, because it, it's.
Is the pond on town property?
Most of the ponds in Haverhill.
It's in there.
The owner has a small portion of it.
All right, the other thing I wanted to ask is, after the driveway going towards Foxville, I've walked out there quite a bit when the problem was talked about all the time. There's a dam that's up the driveway, probably above seventy-five or a hundred feet, that someone keeps pulling it out. And then it washes down into the other pipe down at the, next to the driveway. Are we cleaning that up too?
We, we, we gotta, we can't touch a dam, we can only touch culvists, that's the only.
No, we're cleaning that culvert up.
Rob, what I'm saying, that somebody is tearing apart the dam upstream.
Right, no, we have to clean it up, when it comes downstream, we have to clean it out at the pipe, because it plugs the screens at the pipe.
So who is tearing it out upstream? That's the thing, isn't that, isn't that on Haverhill property? Isn't that Haverhill up there?
It's Haverhill, yeah.
So, why aren't they taking any ownership of the problem? I, I don't understand, I thought Bob was gonna take care of it.
They say they don't hire trappers, that's what he told me on the phone. We've always hired trappers. We have one here now on our own, Haverhill, Johnny.
Greenhouse, we pay for service, yes, that's awesome.
So, that, but that particular culvert is not where the problem is, this culvert, where the problem is, is a little bit further.
No, I know the small one, the smaller pond there, and then there's like.
Four foot by two foot box called it.
Right.
It can take more water than that pond can handle.
And it has a, a metal screen that drops down in front of it.
So, I got a question, um, how much does it cost, is it gonna cost the town, you know, taxpayers, to maintain this?
It's two hundred and sixty dollars a year.
And right now, it's just.
There's no.
Yeah, well, right now, we're paying the money of the highway department, I mean, you may, you may think it pays no cost, but we're paying somebody's salary and you could be doing other things.
Right, when this thing doesn't work, who's gonna have to go fix it?
Well, it's guaranteed to work.
It's guaranteed.
Guaranteed by the guy that sells it?
Well, who else would guarantee that?
Sounds like he's trying to sell a beaver deceiver.
Now, is it something the property owner is interested in paying for?
I don't know how you can, I don't know how we can justify that.
I don't know how we can justify it if there's no problem.
I took the beaver class, and in the class, they told us these beaver deceivers do not work. They might work for a, a short period, a very short period of time, but they do not work.
These things are pretty smart, I mean, we've dealt with them, I've been dealing with them since the problem started in two thousand and three or two thousand and two, I believe. And for the first couple of years, that's all we did, was these things. I mean, we spent our week doing beavers, because they were everywhere and they were out of control right to start. And they can, but we have to go out in the day and take out with a machine, they come back and do more in the night. I, I mean, we've had Bear Hill Road, they pushed a rock, a rock that we could barely move on land into the pipe and jammed the pipe up. I mean, when they say busy like a beaver, they have no idea, these things are out of control. But we've learned, unless it's up bad, the water's getting high, you leave it alone, they don't mess with it, and it just maintains, and it's fine, which is what's happening out there. When I go out there after, Bob says he's emailed again, we go out there, can you go check it? I check it, I come back, I'm like, there was a little bit of mud, the water's three inches below the culvert. The water isn't gonna go through the culvert if you take the mud out. There's not a problem, but he sees the mud, I gotta call somebody. He doesn't, that pond's lower than, I've seen it since I've worked here, this past year.
I, I think it's only gone over the road maybe once or twice, and like you said.
It's gonna go over the road no matter what it does. I've seen those pipes take a full pipe during a hundred year storms and coming over the road.
Right.
I mean, you get a hundred year storm, that's the only time it takes water like that. There's nothing you can do about it.
You need less silt and more water, higher water for this device theoretically to work.
Yeah, the pond's, the pond's a mess up there, it's just.
Where do, where, where would we have more water and less silt that this device might work? Uptak or Salem?
Uptak would quite, Uptak would probably be the, the deepest water down. Bear Hill Road, it won't work, it's not enough water there either.
All right, so, my thoughts.
But Uptak will really cause, if that one screws up there, there's a big problem there, because we can't, we can barely reach it now, because it's so far down the, the wall. We can barely get to that one machine now. So if this beaver deceiver fails, then we're really screwed.
Well, I, I respect that Mike is providing us a solution, and it is guaranteed by the people that will put the device in, that they need to fix it and do, it needs to be done to make it work, if not, they're gonna get it out of there. My, my only, uh.
Yeah, but we still spent the money, sorry.
Right, no, and I, I agree, but, um.
What, we should go take a look at it first and see what the actual problem is, because it doesn't exist. I mean, we've been maintaining that, that's what, that's what really we're fired up about that. There isn't a problem out there, I could see if it was a problem, his house was gonna flood or something, it's never happened, unless it was a hundred year storm, and there ain't nothing, nobody can do it with.
My thought is if we put this device in a place where it might work, it's still, it'll be a test.
That's, that's.
Uh, but, um, then we're gonna have, I think, two systems. We're still gonna have the system we have now with the highway department doing the work that they do. Uh, and then in some places, it might work, it might work for a while, or even if it does work, they're still gonna go by and do the, you know, requisite maintenance. In other words, if, if it, if this system was gonna work in all the locations, that would be great. But if we tested successfully somewhere, it doesn't mean we're gonna be able to use it in all locations. And now we're gonna be spending money for two systems. One, the highway department doing what they do, and also checking this device, cleaning it, whatever. And then the expenditure for this device. So if we did eight, if we did six of these devices, it would be almost nine thousand dollar expenditure. Let's say we had one successful test and say, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna do it in six different places. And then an annual cost of, uh, fifteen hundred bucks for something that people that are out there daily, literally physically working those areas, are telling us that something is not gonna work.
In all honesty, that is the least of our problems, that area. We have problems that are, right now, we got a very active site at the Salem Street spillway.
I'm, I'm getting a little willy on it, uh, we could probably get a successful test. We can use this device at Uptak, because you just told me, there's less silt and more water there to make something like this work.
Here's, here's the issue. Beaver. The issue I see, you know, what did, what size pipe did you say was going under the road on Center Street?
Four foot by two foot.
Four foot by two foot, okay. And the pipe coming out of this deceiver is either ten, twelve, or fifteen inches.
Right.
So you're losing two thirds of your flow right off the bat by trying this.
Well, if you get a hundred year storm, you got three sides of beaver heads encased in this dam.
Right, you've given up all your flow potential. You can pull a screen out there and it's gonna flow water.
It does every time.
But if they put this in, we're gonna lose most of our flow.
Right.
Doesn't seem to make sense.
If, if the device was that bad and it didn't work.
I'm not saying it won't work.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, we can sit here and dispute based on our knowledge, whether or not we think it's gonna work. But basically, we don't know. So that's our point, is that we deserve to test it, because I believe that, you know, if we put a test in and it doesn't work, then he's gonna have to refund our money because he guaranteed it. So it's really not a very risky proposition to try it.
So what was your thought process on the water flow, losing the water?
Well, he talks about that in there, he talks about that the, if the water flow is reduced, it, it, it's not gonna make any difference.
I mean, when we need it to flow.
Yeah.
You've only got a twelve, ten, or fifteen inch pipe.
Right.
As opposed to a two by four foot culvert.
Have you seen how fast that pond fills up when we get a rainstorm or a hundred year storm?
Well, that's a good question.
That can go from what it is now to within a day to overflowing the road.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you're losing quite a bit of the flow.
I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have a problem with this if there wasn't a problem, if there was a problem, actual problem out there. It hasn't been a problem out there, that we haven't been able to go out there, like I said, pull the screen, problem solved. There hasn't been a water height issue there all year, since the early spring after the snowmelt. The water hasn't been high enough to even go through that pipe. I mean, the pipe's been dried up all summer.
You're, you're absolutely right, you know, this year, it has been lower, but in, in previous years, it hasn't. And in previous years, you know, I've been out there to see when, you know, it's, it's a problem.
But in previous years, there's been a solid flow through the other stream too that's dried up now. That other, the two pipes on the other side of his driveway haven't been taking water for, what, the last three months?
Right.
They, I mean, because we checked them before the, we got that rain, uh, was it before Thanksgiving or after Thanksgiving, that big rainstorm that was coming? We went around, checked everything, and there was no, there, there was some leaves in front of the pipe, actually, he had called, because it was leaves in front of the screen. And, but there was no flow, it was, it wasn't even going through the pipes, there's no water there.
Until somebody breaks that dam upstream.
Right.
All right, well.
There's actually two of them in right now, there's two stages of the engine going up.
So the bottom line is, we don't have a funding mechanism at this point, right?
The, the property owner won't, will not pay for this?
If the property owner was gonna pay for it, I wouldn't be here today.
Well, like I said, he's the one that's got the, he's the only one that has the problem. He has this fixation on the whole area out there for some reason.
Yeah, but the problem exists, like you said.
No, it, it does exist, but it doesn't exist right now, it hasn't.
No, I'm saying the problem exists at other, other locations.
Oh, right, no, just, just about everywhere except for Bear Hill Road, right now, we have a beaver problem.
Right, so maybe, maybe this is not the best place to test it, I'll, I'll give you that. But, you know, to me, it seems like we, we have a beaver problem, we should be looking at potential other solutions.
What about a, a trapping solution for the town?
Well, I mean, that's pretty much what we do now, you know, we, we trap.
That has worked this year, it's cut down water.
How many have we, Johnny?
Uh, fifteen, sixteen this year, and I started halfway through the summer, late, late into the summer.
Now, do we own a trap yet?
Yes, two.
Two. You did get some traps, okay. I know you borrowed one.
We borrowed one from Georgetown, and we have two of our own now.
So I guess we'll have to assess it for a short period of time, see if, if we are ahead of it.
There, there hasn't been much activity out there, yet, there has been some new trees having been chewed, but not like there has been in the past.
Beavers are gonna chew trees no matter what.
Yeah. That's how they cut their teeth.
They have to eat, and they have to eat, so, even with the deceiver, they'll still take a tree down. The best way is to eliminate them.
Thin the herd.
Thin it down.
So, you're okay with taking it under advisement, or?
Yeah, I think we should take it under advisement, to give a hard answer right now would not be a good idea, but appreciate your presentation, I really.
Let's, let's look into it, if you guys could give us some feedback as to whether there's a better place to try one in the event that we have the funding.
As far as deep water, I think Uptak would be the only place we could try one, um.
And what size pipe?
The spillway on Salem Streets too, we can't mess with that, that, that's too easy to go, to start flooding there.
What about Bear Hill?
No, Bear Hill wouldn't work there, Bear Hill's under control now, there's no problem out there right now.
Where is the problem?
Uh, right after the power lines, where that dip is.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, we've been there.
Feeds into that pond across the street, uh, that the, uh, Cedar Dale owns.
Yeah.
There was a, for years, there's been a problem with it.
Aren't we in Georgetown there?
No, that's, oh.
Okay, all right.
Trust me, we don't wanna take care of any more spots than we already have.
Just trying to redraw the map.
All right, sorry. Well, if you wanna get rid of it, yeah, it's true stuff, I guess we can try and do that one.
And give Haverhill to the other man.
Yeah, that's Haverhill, actually.
Can we, can we have a consensus on some type of a timeline, uh, so if we're.
When, when's the worst time that we have the problem out there?
Fall, springtime's usually the worst, because you get the slow runoff and the beavers are, when they come out of hibernation, they're most active.
And then they're, and then the young ones are starting to get, they're born.
Yeah, that's usually what, that's like the beginning of the summer, they, usually the yearlings get kicked out, because they have, got new pups.
Well.
They start to search now.
What's the trapping procedure, can you trap in the spring?
Yes.
The trapping.
Well, let's imagine, and let's keep our mind open here, let's say that we have six locations, three of them are really well maintained with this device, and then you guys are managing just three, wouldn't that be a good solution?
Yeah, it would, it, it would, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's get.
Uh, lately, we, you know, we're hard pressed to find time, you know, we usually go out, we want, and we do other things to take care of all this and.
So I don't think this device will work everywhere, but let's see if we can find a place where it might work. And if we can get half of the locations taken care of by a device, that'll lessen half of the work for you, that might be a great solution. Let's put a timeline on it, let's see if we can get this decided by April. Is that not, is that reasonable, Mike, is that, okay?
Yep.
This way here, we, I mean, we're in the middle of the winter, and I, I don't know, unless we start bringing some beavers in for questioning, we're gonna have to wait to see what they do. Well, we'll be getting ice pretty soon, so.
Do they work in the snow?
They can, the ice.
The snow they will, once they get ice, they can't move around.
Yeah. All right, so we'll do that, April, April first or whatever, first week in April, we'll reconvene, and, uh, we'll see if we can, uh, work a solution, maybe we can have it both ways, if the device works and it really does reduce your workload.
I feel that trap, sorry, trapping will reduce the workload.
Oh, then it's a free.
And we started this year, so.
Good, all right, well, that's what we're gonna talk about in April.
So, so in the interim, should, Mike, should you maybe meet with, um, finance committee and see if they may have a, a mechanism to try and fund a test one, in the event that we find a spot? Because otherwise, we have no funding procedure either.
Do you have any references of people that have used this, and somebody that lists up numbers we can call?
Sure, I'm ready.
You can definitely produce evidence that it works, you'll find someone, if you wanna find someone. We have to find out if it'll work for us.
Right.
Guys do a great job, thank you.
And thank you guys.
Thank you very much, thanks, Mike.
For getting the roads open and coming tonight, still being awake.
Yeah, that's what we do, we just do it.
The first thank you all weekend.
I'm sure Bobby thanked you.
Oh, come on, it was a phone call.
You were just saying it wasn't a phone call, thank you. Uh, he trusted everyone of them.
So we'll do it again tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Slough around.
Oh, it's sloughing, it was late, we gotta get that one.
Okay, um, thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, all right, great. Have a good Christmas.
Thank you.
Mike, Merry Christmas, Mike.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for your help up in front.
No problem.
Okay, um, Nancy, just so you know, we, Joe moved each of the one, and I, I seconded them, and we voted unanimously. Okay, next up, we have, um, Eric Harper and William Buckley to, um, talk to us about a plant.
Well, greetings, I wanna express my gratitude for you taking time out of your busy lives, especially at this time of the year. And, uh, I also wanna express my appreciation to the town boards and the highway department. Hey, the lot was plowed really nice, Federal Way looks beautiful. And, uh, for all the people who work in town, really, they've done a fantastic job, always find them to be effective, efficient, courteous, and professional. So I do appreciate that. So I thought you'd wanna get that feedback, it's, uh, I know it's important. So I know I have a short time here, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about, uh, myself. Uh, I moved here in, up in, in nineteen eighty-six with my family, and, um, it's been a great place. We really like this area here, the Georgetown, Groveland area is just a great place to live and bring up a family. We have six kids here, and it's been fantastic. Yeah, we purchased this, um, this, um, land in Groveland Business Park back in nineteen ninety-four, and we moved our business up here. And, uh, it's been a great place to, to work. Uh, we, we ended up purchasing the majority of the land there, developed, uh, you know, four or five projects. And it's just been a great place to, to work. I never had an issue, nothing stolen, nothing broken into, uh, where I came from, it was a problem. The police department does a fantastic job, every time I see them, I say, please, pack around here, question anybody that's here, if they don't work here, they don't belong here. It's been great. Um, we, we, we designed the buildings there aesthetically, uh, it's, it's created almost seventy jobs in the area. It's broadened your tax base, and I just think it's, it's been great. I hope you take the time to go down there to Groveland Business Park and take a look at it. So the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the project in sight of the Yesties property, and to understand the local initiative proposal, and that's why Bill's here, and to gain your support. So, uh, this site, and this, this, this picture here is courtesy of Shirley Howard Yestie. Uh, this site depicts the property, uh, down there by the river. It's a nice piece of property, as you can see, it's all disturbed right back to the riverbank. That's, that's the picture of it in the heyday, this, this is dated nineteen eighty-two, this picture. And I'll just turn it so you can see it. But you can see, uh, all the way down to the riverbank, this is where the, the Yesties used to, uh, take their boats in and out. They have a boat. And I have some other pictures that are real clear there. The proposed project is gonna take place in this area here. And those three sheds are gonna be coming down, but it's in here. So, uh. So, uh, I, I did touch base with the National Heritage Fishing Wildlife, uh, I, I've come to know, uh, John Regus in there, uh, with, with some of the projects that were done in Federal Way, he said he has absolutely no interest in this site, it's all disturbed, and nothing bothered him. I did that before we did a, uh, before I bought it. Also, we did a level, a phase two, um, twenty-one E, and, uh, which took care of all the, the questions that came up on phase one, and the property is nice and clean. When we read the Affordable Housing Committee report, uh, which was put together in two thousand and four, we came to understand that this area is designated as an intense development for multifamily, commercial, and industrial use, which was kind of a surprise to me, and, uh, that, that report is not on your website, but Bill was able to get it from the state, and we read through it, and it was, it was, it was, uh, very interesting. The, the, uh, the project is comprised of three phases. And my intention is to not, not, uh, sell any of this property, but to, uh, develop it and maintain it. The, uh, so that it would have onsite management, and, uh, it would count, all of the units would count towards the town's affordable housing, uh, situation. Phase one is right here, it consists of, consists of twenty-eight, uh, townhouses. And, uh, that's really what we're in here to try to, uh, get moving. Phase two is here, this is, this is a twenty-eight, twenty-four unit building, and phase three is another, uh, twenty-four unit, unit building. These, this would, this would take care of the town's affordable housing situation, or at least protect the town for the next probably, uh, six to nine years. And when I sat down, we met with Affordable Housing Committee, uh, I don't know if you received the letter from them, or support.
Yes.
But, uh, that's how we came to this kind of, because they were asking us if we could phase this in, uh, that would be suitable for their needs. And I have no problem with it at all. Our expectation is that the majority of those residing here will be, uh, people from the town, who are, uh, getting along in years, are looking to shed their home, homeownership, and look for something that they can rent that's affordable and well maintained. So, um, there's a significant amount of asphalt that is being removed here. This is all, this is all, I know you're familiar with this site, but all of this back to here is paved. So as you can see, all of this which are in green, is a building right here, that this one is, is gonna be taking the same footprint off. That old mill building, the green building back here, this one's gonna be right, right on it, this one is over here. We hadn't, we had envisioned a, um, a park back here, and this, that's what this parking would be, would be suitable for. So, I know you're curious about the front building, and this is a, this is a picture of the front building as well. And, uh, if this whole area here is now paved, and we're intending to take care of, take all that pavement off, put the parking in the back and on the side, uh, presently have a permit right now to do the renovation on that property. It's gonna have a new roof put on, it's gonna be a new front, all new exterior, and, um, the whole area will be beautified significantly, uh, compared to what it is now.
And what type of use are you thinking of in the front?
Uh, this would be, uh, I'm just looking for some kind of, um, you know, retail use. It would be suitable for up to six different, um, people, or one, one type of business use.
You thinking about leasing it?
Yes, gonna lease it, gonna lease it. So the site is gonna be less impervious than it is presently, significantly. And also, around this site, there'll be berms, there'll be berms with, uh, trees, or shrubbery, and fences to, uh, further isolate it.
Have you had a chance to speak with the neighbors on the backside?
Uh, yeah, I, I've met several of the neighbors, but, uh, you know, once, once we get this thing underway, I will be talking to every one of them.
No, just curious what the feedback is.
Yeah, it's, it's, so far, it's been, you know, positive, but it, the, the plan has changed since then. It has changed. Initially, we were looking to put in, uh, twenty-two units, kind of like a duplexes, but when we ran the numbers, it just doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense.
So you're gonna do twenty-eight townhouses?
Yes, yes, I was hoping we could do something along the, uh, sea, uh, conservation, um, development, but when I talked to the engineering, uh, they didn't think it would go, so they've advised me to go to this limited initiative, uh, local initiative proposal. So I'm gonna turn the time over to, uh, to, um, Bill to discuss the LIP program.
Thank you, Eric, uh, so for the record, my name is William Buckley, and I'm, I'm here on behalf of Eric to, uh, assist with, uh, preparation of a, um, of a LIP application. So LIP, as Eric said, stands for Local Initiative Program, it's, uh, it's commonly referred to as a Friendly Forty-B, right? So it's, um, uh, what, and, and what they mean by that is it's a forty-B that, um, uh, that involves both the chief, uh, chief executive officer, and the board of selectmen in this case, um, in the, in the planning process, or at least the planning process is identified to you early on, involves the Affordable Housing Committee, and involves several of the, uh, of the boards and commissions that typically would not be included in a process under a, under a forty-B application. So in a typical forty-B application, there are three criteria that are necessary in order to apply. One, you have to have site control, which Eric has in this case. Two, you have to agree that you're gonna be a limited dividend organization, which means that you're willing to limit your profits on the site. And then three, you need a site eligibility letter from a subsidizing agency. Uh, in, in, in a typical, or in a classic forty-B project, that subsidizing agency is usually the mass development, or mass housing, or mass housing partnership, there are only a few, uh, organizations chartered to do that. In a LIP application, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development serves as the subsidizing agency. But what's different here is, is there's no subsidy, there's no low income housing tax credits, there's no real, uh, bargains on financing in exchange for the affordable units. However, there still is a requirement that twenty-five percent of the affordable, uh, of the units be affordable. And in this case, where Eric is, uh, is proposing a rental development, actually a hundred percent of those units, even though only twenty-five percent of them are affordable, a hundred percent of those units would count towards the affordable housing inventory for the town, which I think is something that was, uh, as when we met with the committee, was somewhat attractive to them. Basically, in order to be able to apply for a LIP application, um, both the, um, the Affordable Housing Committee, and, and more importantly, I think, the Board of Selectmen, uh, need to submit an applicant, uh, providing a letter of support, um, uh, to, to the application, as well as signing on as, um, as, uh, as, uh, supporting the application. What that does is really just a, a first step in the process, what that does is that allows developer to move forward and apply to Department of Housing and Community Development for the, kind of the third piece of the forty-B puzzle, which is a site eligibility letter. At that point, that's when, you know, a lot of the planning work goes into this, where, um, you know, and once that's, uh, the, the great expense of all the engineering and all the architectural and design work into the project can be made, because there's an opportunity, now Eric knows he can apply for a comprehensive permit with the zoning board. And, you know, it will have been through, the project will have already been through a couple, um, times of review, but it's, as a Friendly Forty-B, it would involve, we'd be coming back to the board to show our plans and our, um, our discussions, as Eric said, we would be working closely with the neighbors. The two requirements, though, is that we'd have to go back, we'd have to go to, to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit, and would also be subject to, uh, Conservation Commission approval under the Floodments Protection Act. As, I, I don't know that, um, so it's in total, um, the project as proposed is seventy-six units, broken up in, uh, in, in three phases that Eric mentioned. I think what we, what we really did discuss, and I, I'll just touch on it briefly, is the total site is twenty-one acres, I believe.
Yes.
And, uh, this, this component of the project would be on a little better than, uh, just about five and a half acres. The remaining property, or the majority of the remaining part, property, Eric is working on a, um, a commercial, um, uh, a commercial park, which would be, uh, storage and some, have some storage and, and commercial uses in there, is on a commercial park in that piece. And as we mentioned, in the Affordable Housing Plan, um, we're very intrigued to identify that, you know, obviously, there's a need to create some affordable housing units in town, and the fact that this site has been previously disturbed, that it's been able to, it's served by all the, um, all, all the necessary infrastructure, right, water and sewer, gas, electric, um, it's, there's an existing traffic pattern, so we're not talking about creating new roads, uh, the site obviously has been able to sustain, um, uh, traffic over the years, as its history is a, as a lumberyard. And as a, as a person with some municipal planning experience, um, I think there's a great opportunity for the town here to, uh, not only help foster, uh, the creation of a, of a new kind of, uh, industrial park, commercial product, park, um, project, but also, you, you, you're, I say killing two birds with one stone, but you're, you're, you know, you're creating additional tax base from the commercial side, as well as a, what will be a, a revenue generator in most, in, in, in most cases, because it's gonna be private road, it's gonna be private trash pickup, it's gonna be private, uh, private snow plowing, and, you know, this, the entire seventy-six units would count towards the, the town's Affordable Housing Authority. So, I know we're, we're a fairly short armed time, but I just wanted to touch on a few causes on, on this. The location is a location that's been identified as something that can sustain this type of, um, of project. From a residential standpoint, this is, is a project will take its great opportunity of the river views, right? So, uh, it, they will really be attractive residential units. It creates a residential buffer between what I think is Wolf Drive, be, well, what I believe is a better buffer from Wolf Drive to the commercial industrial park, because it's a, it's a, it's a, although it's an intensive use, it's still a, a residential use, versus an extension of the commercial park right to, uh, the back of the Wolf Drive, uh, properties. It helps meet the affordable housing goals, uh, the phasing of the plan allows the town to absorb the units by way of municipal services and others without great impact, and so there'll be approximately twenty-four or so units created every couple of years. Eric is proposed as a, is a reputable and respectable developer in the town, uh, with a track record that's, uh, intends to maintain ownership here, and also provide onsite, uh, onsite management, um, uh, for the project. So, um, with that being said, I will, uh, I'll, uh, I'll close my mouth in which you ask some questions.
Question.
Sure.
In this type of a process, is the property still taxable? Is where it's, I, I know that there was some different types of housing projects that we would not have been able to tax.
Absolutely, this is, this would not be a nonprofit en, entity, this would be a, a for-profit entity. Although profits are limited, it's a, it's a for-profit entity that would be fully taxed.
So you don't lose the ability to tax?
Not under this one, okay.
The other units, and on this end of it, I gather none of those have garages or anything like that?
Townhouses, yeah, all these have garages.
Oh, they do.
All have garages, and, and all have two, two parking, uh, two parking spaces, one in, one in the garage, one outside. This, this, the whole bottom level is, is garage.
Oh, no kidding?
All parking underneath.
Okay. Now, how, how many, that was my next question, how tall will those back buildings be?
Those will be four stories.
Four stories.
With an elevator.
Elevated.
Yeah.
Parking underneath.
Yeah, parking underneath.
So four stories tall, three, three, three residential floors and a garage floor.
Three residential and a garage.
So those are all sprinkled, I gather?
Absolutely.
The townhouses sprinkled or sprinkled?
Sprinkled, yes.
Okay.
Everything sprinkled.
Interesting.
I have a, I have a few questions, um, the letter of support, um, I'm assuming that you would have a template of one, or a board plate?
I would have that.
It would be non-binding to the town?
Yes.
Okay. And the town would be held harmless if you fail to secure the necessary permit through the zoning board, I would think.
That's fair.
That would be my expectation.
Yep.
The, uh, open space, which is very exciting to me, uh, this project is exciting, I commend you, uh, for, on this presentation. But the, uh, the open space, is that a requirement as part of the process, that you have to donate, uh, a portion of this for open space use?
No.
Okay.
No.
The parking lot that I see there on the right, that's the parking lot for the general public to enjoy the river and the park there, but it, that's also the parking lot for the commercial buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so.
Not, not commercial buildings, for the, for the residential buildings.
A residential buildings, okay, and that, and those, that parking lot and those two buildings would be accessible only through Wolf Drive, is that correct?
Uh, no.
No?
From Main Street.
Alright, I just wanna.
Now, is Wolf Drive gonna be a gate? I, I know at one time, uh, you had mentioned that, you know, you consider all aspects of it, but is that gonna be an open road as well?
Uh, it, I'll tell you, when I talked to the fire chief, uh, he indicated that he would like that to be open. Now, I think, I think the normal, uh, you know, arrival in, in, in Egress, or of this would be out to Main Street. I can't see anybody going through that way, it would, it's too easy to, it's, it's all designed to.
So you won't have a loop coming back through your commercial section off of the end?
No, no, this is a crash gate right here, crash gate, and this will be all fenced in, all fenced in.
But that would be my concern, that commercial vehicles would have to, or would be going through Wolf Drive to, to get into their, their area, so.
They'll be, they'll be restricted.
That's, that's, that's good.
Totally restricted. So, you know, it's, this is, this is gonna further isolate this commercial area. You know, honestly, this, this is, I, I envision that this will look very nice when it's completed. It's, uh, it's in the planning stages, um, you know, I'd like to put the electricity underground here, and duck in the commercial area now. Okay, underground, get rid of all those poles, uh, you know, it's just a, a total isolate.
Is that what the project was the other day, you ran underground?
Uh, that was the gas line.
Oh, okay.
That was the gas line, but the next one was gonna be the electric line, uh, and, uh, I hope to do that at the same time we do this, because we're gonna be down here, uh, putting in underground utilities here, and, uh, and at the same time, I'm hoping to do the same thing in the spring, so we can get the equipment on site and, and just be as efficient as we can.
Okay, so just to recap, section A would be something you would start first year, and then you were talking B, then C, or is B and C going?
Yeah.
All together?
No, just, and just touching on that subject, so Eric has, um, given the instructions to, to have the, you know, to have the application process complete, so that that's, uh, construction on, on, um, on phase A could coincide with some of the work he's doing on the, on the commercial park, which means that we're on a fairly tight timeline in order to get, because DHCD does a pretty thorough review, and will seek actually additional input from the town in their review of the application, so it's our goal, if possible, to get application into DHCD by the end of the month, um, looking for some type of approval from them, um, in, uh, sometime during the month of January, which would then allow us to, in, uh, maybe early February, apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and which, I think will be a, um, you know, a little bit of a back, a back and forth process with them, and, um, you know, sometime, it would, would be, ideally, would, uh, would like to address all concerns, so there can be an approval put in place sometime in, uh, in the spring, early spring.
There, there's one thing that I, I know that we probably haven't, by what you just said, doesn't give us much time, but there was another project that was proposed in town, and found that it was best if we had the abuddies, get together and have a, you know, a meeting, get the input back and forth, give you an opportunity to speak openly about what's going on. It just seems like it would be a lot easier process if we did that phase, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, it has to happen, I mean, when we get, when we come back, we have to go to the ZPA and the, and the Conservation Commission, everybody gets a chance to put their input in, and, listen, I live here.
No, I know, I realize.
I work, I work one mile from this place.
No, I know, I'm just worried the, the other people the most, were, um, you know, different situations, that could be going in there, or what the whole plan was. It's just, people are a lot better to deal with when they know exactly what you're talking, and, um, what you're proposing.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like a great plan, I know, you know, Affordable Housing gave us a letter telling us, you know, they liked the, the idea, Conservation has given us a letter that you're gonna be back from the two-hundred foot. I would imagine that's why that area up there is better to make it like a park area, because you don't really wanna wa, go into the two-hundred-foot area anyway, correct?
If I could comment on that, so the park area is, there's been a couple different concepts that have been discussed, because with affordable housing.
Yeah, that's, that's just under consideration. I mean, it has, it's, it's not, uh, it's.
It's not fixed in some manner.
You know, the Conservation Commission's gonna have a whole lot to say about what ha, what is allowed to happen here.
Right.
And, uh, just, they made it very clear that they wouldn't be part of this process, which I applaud. You know, having, having spent, uh, six years on the Conservation Commission, six years on the Planning Board, and, and other years on different committees for the selectmen, I, I appreciate what everybody goes through.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be open. And I'm, I'm here.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I own, I own a significant amount of property in town, and I'm not going anywhere.
I understand.
So, I, I'm here to work with the people. This, this is, and Bill and I have talked about, this, this limited, um.
Local, local initiative program.
Program, gives the town much more flexibility than if I should go to, to the state. So I'm here because I live here.
Right.
And I'm saying, I'm here to work with them.
No, I know, we have more opportunity, the different boards get to get involved in it, you know, everyone gets their input, I understand that.
Yeah. So, so the town, you know, whoever's in, whoever wants to be involved, they can be involved, and we're all open for their, their, their input.
Yeah, the, the problem we have in this town is people don't watch these meetings, they don't show up at meetings, you can tell that, like, like tonight. So we can have a series of wonderful meetings with ZBA and Conservation, and everybody's getting along. And then eventually, Donnie's gonna get the call, or I will, and some abudders say, I heard you guys are putting factories over there or something. You know, some rumors start going around, and then, and then the petitions start, and unfortunately, that's been a pattern. So I think the courtesy and the informality of an open session to the public, possibly separate and distinct from a ZBA meeting or a Conservation meeting, is I think that's what you're talking about, just a totally separate, open meeting to discuss your plan.
Same thing we did when we put lights up at the public field.
Yeah.
It is rather informal, is rather, not tied into a board meeting or a commission meeting, I think, uh, I think that'll just.
Yeah, my plan was to, was to go around and meet all the neighbors, particularly those ones at the Wolf, Wolf Drive, or Wolf Avenue. And, uh, you know, introduce them to the plan and see what, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about that, I'm thinking about that.
I know you're right.
You know, it's, it's, it's hard to please all the people all the time, but we can try to please most of them.
Oh, right.
Uh, and, uh.
And, and I, we, I think we, I can speak on our behalf here, uh, we would love an opportunity to take a walk through on, on the property.
Yes.
Uh, uh, maybe not now that there's snow, but when the opportunity arrives.
That would be great, I, you're welcome, you're welcome. So the rest of this property is, is gonna be storage, uh, used for, uh, in, in the back, back of this building, this is a separate kind of situation. But the rest of this is gonna be gated, controlled, uh, storage, uh, different uses. Hopefully, local uses, you know, carpenters, electricians, uh, you know, different people that do different, uh, work things, looking for storage, uh, whatever storage is.
Fur trappers?
I never thought about that one. Well, which is a great thing for the town, because sometimes that creates problems with, you know, the local contractor starts all, starts and generates equipment in his yard, right? And that's, uh, it, it's, next thing you know, you're running a contractor's yard in a residential zone, so it's.
It's a great opportunity.
It's all over, people are jamming the garages with different things, they, they love to have a little space that's very reasonable.
But everything that would be going in there would be inside of the building, it's not like you'd be putting construction materials all over it, just so people don't get skid.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you look at the, uh, the use of it, you know, we have, I have significant pictures of what the use was.
Right.
Uh, it's, it's, you know, it kinda changed. And, and, you know, they call me Mister Clean where I work, 'cause I like everything straight, neat, clean and organized. And, um, you know, this is really kind of irritating to me right now. But there's a process of time, the transition time that I have to go through. And, uh, I have entertained all kinds of different, um, concepts. And, um, I think this, come to the conclusion, this is the best use of the land. It's gonna be the best for the neighbors, it's gonna be the best for the town. It's going to, um, take an eyesore and make it look very nice. It's going to further isolate the, the industrial, you know, the commercial area. And it's also gonna be a nice buffer there that, that is under control. Daily oversight is gonna be under. Uh, you, this will be a clean, neat, impressive area, a fantastic improvement. So, uh.
I, I like the fact that you thought of, you know, having the parking, you know, in areas where people are gonna be able to, like, people that don't wanna leave their house because they don't wanna lose their garage, you know? They're cleaning the snow off the car in the winter, I mean, that's pretty thoughtful of having it parking underneath on those buildings over there. As, you know.
And, and just to be realistic here, you know, this is gonna be a lot more difficult than this. This, this, this is, uh, this is, this has got some, there's some hurdles to get through there, you know? So, you know, in my mind, I'm saying, if this happens down here, I'm happy. If that happens and it helps the town, I'm even happy.
So, for the benefit of the public, 'cause we're, you know, uh, people that will be viewing this, can you just point A and B?
Yes.
And, and if all goes well, uh, what type of timeframe are we talking about in terms of rollout, implementation, and people living there and so forth?
And this is, this is, you know, as you know, I've, I've sat on this property now for about a year.
Yeah.
And, uh, this, this I would, in hopes to get it in the ground, site work.
Spring.
Early spring.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's A?
That's A.
Okay.
A is outlined right here.
Alright. And that's twenty-eight townhouses?
Twenty-eight townhouses.
Okay.
This, uh, this is the front building, and that's already started, that's a different project, but this is already started. That's already, uh, it's, it's really, it's, we, weather's gonna curtail us, but, uh, that's all gonna come to bother pretty quick. This, we're talking, you know, probably three years down the road to even consider this, okay? And this would be another two to three years after that. So, that's the timeframe.
So you figured this section A would take roughly how long to build?
Uh, within a year.
One year?
It'll be done. That'll be, that'll be, I'll wanna get in there and do it as efficiently as I can. 'Cause remember now, the, I'm not selling these.
No, I know.
They're gonna, I'm gonna, uh, you know.
So as they're going up, you'll be able, like, say you put up one section of four, those you could start getting people moving in. You're not gonna build all twenty-eight before people start moving in.
We probably, uh, would, would try to put all the foundations in, do all the site work, put all the foundations in and start putting them up. And, uh, and the way they do it, if we can do it efficiently, they would, they would move right through it. And they're pretty, they're pretty good at it, they're pretty good at it. So, uh, my plan would be to get it done, and, uh, because I, that's, that's what I'm looking to accomplish, number one. The rest of it, like I say, is, if it happens, it happens.
But you wanna have for-rent signs up by next fall?
I don't think I'll be putting the for-rent signs up, but some people will be trying to get people in there. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would really like to do that, but I'm gonna need, in order for me to do that, I, I really need to ask the selectmen tonight for a letter of support, uh, so that we can move this to the state and then get back here. Because now I've gotta, I've got to, I've got to start working with the ZBA and the people in town, uh, and that's critical.
You, the actual application would require a letter of support and a signature from the chairman, uh, Erica, it's two things.
Well, I, I'd be in favor of it as long as it, you know, it has the, you know, the protective covenants for the town. Whatever the template is, whatever the boilerplate, we'd have to have the town council look at it, but I, I certainly would be in favor of that, getting that generated for you.
Yeah. So we will, we'll put something together and, uh, and, and, and submit it to you.
Sure.
Is that, you, is there any other concerns that you have?
No, not at this point, I mean, I, you've got a letter, a letter from Affordable Housing endorsing that they feel it's a good project for them and for the town. And Conservation gave us a letter stating that they're comfortable provided you stay out of the two-hundred-foot buffer, correct? And, um.
There is a, if, if you look at this plan here, here's, I just wanna, and then, uh, Mike, you can come over here and look if you want. But this is, because last time I showed, I was showing you more of a, you know, more of a, a concept after we talked and put it, I put it together. So this is the, uh, this is, I'm gonna outline, this is the two-hundred-foot buffer right here. Goes here, here, comes into this a little bit, and comes out here. So, it's, uh, it's, it's pretty good. Now, if, if you look at this right now, there's a building, there's a building right here that comes all the way, here's the two-hundred-foot buffer right here, comes all the way over to here, this building that's presently there, that's the old, the building. So we're actually gonna be, in this area, less encroaching on the two-hundred-foot buffer. On this area here, we're gonna be, uh, more encroaching than what's there. But this and this is probably about equal. So there'll be actually, uh, a zero. I mean, there'll be, there'll be no improvement, it'll just stay the way it is presently. So, and there, there is a, there is a flood plain right here. This is the hundred-year flood plain. And beyond this, this is a five-year hun, five, five-hundred-year flood plain. Which is most of that area down there, Woff Street included. So, that's.
Is that where the concept of parking under those buildings came from, to keep it open?
Yes. Just in, just in case, and, uh, you know, and these are, these are garages under it too. Yeah, we don't care about the car, though, save the bill.
What if I'm getting into the car, I'm just like.
It's okay.
Wear your life jacket.
So you'll be, so it, it's gonna balance out?
Yeah, it's gonna balance out.
In terms of, uh, satisfying the, um, the buffers out.
Good, is that something that's a problem, Mike, what you just explained, or is that, is that all workable?
Yes, I, I'd say it's workable, you know, when it comes down to the specifics, we'll look at it and see what kind of trade-offs we can make perhaps. But, you know, the, just the fact that he's trying to avoid being in the two-hundred-foot buffer as much as possible, that's a good sign.
That's great.
And the open space underneath, is that a benefit to that?
Yeah.
Alright, so what you're saying is, you don't have a problem with, you know, moving on this, provided town council reviews the paperwork and then?
Yeah, if you agree, I, I, I.
I, I believe that sounds pretty fair.
Our, our necessary due diligence for the town, I think, you know, that would be normal, so, certainly be a favor of it.
When do you think that you'd have something you could?
Would, would we get that, um, to Nancy or directly to town council?
Directly to Nancy, she'll forward it to council and, uh, we'll.
Can, can we ask for, for a vote on that, or?
Sure.
Yeah, did, that, they have a letter, we'll have to meet your approval, of course, and sign it and.
That'd be the proper thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, draft a, uh, accept a.
We receive it.
A letter. Receive a letter or a template or a boilerplate letter for review by a town council for a, um, support letter for your project. Uh, with the expectation that, uh, we'll have it completed, uh, to all party satisfaction and executed as soon as possible.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Hold on, David.
Aye.
Aye.
So, so along with that, that letter, we will also give you this application that needs to be signed by, who signs this?
Uh, by the chairman.
By the chairman, and also needs to be signed by, is this, uh, Bruce Adams?
Yeah, the chair, so it's, you know.
Affordable housing.
DHCD is interested in hearing, if, if, if there is an affordable housing committee, they'd like the chair of that committee to sign on also, some communities don't have one.
Okay.
Uh, but in this case, in this case, we would be, uh, right, so I don't, we'd be asking for you to grant the authority, or we'd ask, be asking for the board to grant the authority to Mr. Green to submit the, to sign the application, in conformance with the, the, uh, the support letter.
Is that in that motion, okay?
No, you should do that, just sign the application, that's what you have to say.
Um, would you like to make a motion that, in the event that council reviews it, finds it acceptable, that, uh, we make a motion that I will sign the document?
Okay, alright, I'll go ahead, uh, I'll make that motion, then.
Second.
While the council, uh, approves the, uh, the letter, the draft, and, uh, presents it in a form that can be signed by the chair, that we go ahead and, uh, authorize the chair to sign it.
He's talking about the application.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the application, right.
I'll second that.
Hold on, David.
Aye. And we're gonna meet again December thirtieth?
Thirtieth.
We don't, we're not taking a holiday recess, so, you know, we've got a lot of issues to work through, so.
Oh.
But I can't guarantee how quickly council will vote during the holidays, so. Who is council?
Uh, a couple minute age.
Mark?
Who's Mark here?
Is Mark still with us?
Mark, huh?
Pro vote, what do you think of?
Is Mark with you, uh, is, so is he?
Probably any, any one of them, right?
Yeah.
Probably John.
Or something like this, it could be, could be Ilana.
Ilana.
Could be, um, Joe Bard, maybe.
Again, uh, before I depart, I would like to express my appreciation to Conservation Commission, Affordable Housing, of course, the Highway Department, and yourselves for, uh, the time you've taken, this is a busy time of year for everybody. My wife is going crazy. I'm going crazy, Bill's going crazy. I know that, uh, you know, to put this time in, uh, we really appreciate your effort, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the time.
Thanks for not mentioning that I smashed your front door at the other building that time, when we had to go in to see if there was a real fire.
See, forget about it.
No, I remember that. I do remember that.
Does it have an axe, Black?
They didn't have them back, though. We had an axe, though. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, have a good night.
All of them need to focus back.
That's, that's.
So, every, I think it's every ten you get it, it holds up any way you use it for the year.
Yeah.
They do it through process.
I don't see, have a nice holiday.
Yeah, actually, that was a result of the, uh, Affordable Housing, they, they said, hey, do this, it really protects the town.
Yeah, and pushing it out about nine years, actually.
Yeah.
It's great.
Good night and Merry Christmas.
Okay, very good, we'll see you.
I'll see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for cleaning up the, uh, here. That's something, somebody was asking me, there was something out there the back of the property. You can actually see it coming up Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
Is there something out there that just appeared?
Uh, there is a, uh, there's a gentleman who is repairing a float. Is it a float? It's a float. He's got three floats in it, and, uh, he's actually repairing those, um, it's gonna take them about a year.
Oh.
So.
That's what it was, okay.
Yeah.
They, they thought that there was a dock or something going in out there, which I'm like, wow, already?
It's not, it's not in the water, it's out, it's out of the, it's out of the water.
Okay.
So every, everything that was in the water is out of the water.
Okay.
And, uh.
Take care.
Take care.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Good night.
Okay, just, oh, mate, was there something you needed from us?
Oh, uh, my name is Dave Benoid, a, a new owner of the Pizza Grove.
Oh, cool.
Pizza restaurant, and you're hopefully be signing my common victory of license tonight. So I just came just to make sure there were no issues.
Okay. I don't think there are.
I don't think so, yeah.
I just got a margarita pizza the other night.
Oh, great. Thanks for coming.
So let's see, next we have, um, we wanted to just, uh, maybe we should skip over that and go to the, uh, once Nancy gets back in. We have, we've already reviewed the letter from the housing authority. We did get a letter here from, uh, the council and agent that is stating that after the other meeting we had, the, um, they're gonna move the, um, the meal program as of last Friday.
Merrimack Valley.
Merrimack Valley, yeah. What is it, nutritional?
Yeah.
Program, okay. They're moving, um, the site from the fire station, and it's not gonna affect. Program, okay, they're moving, um, the site from the fire station, and it's not gonna affect any of the meals that the people in town were getting. So, um, it looks like that's not, right?
Well, it will, it won't affect the people in the homes that are delivering meals.
Okay.
But there are a few people, as you know, a handful, that were coming to the site, and I think Lynn, I don't have the letter in front of me, but I believe Lynn at the end said she was going to try to find a way to still service them somehow.
Okay.
I think it's the very end of that letter.
Okay. Alright, um, well, hopefully they can get that all resolved, and taken care of. The other thing, um, the policemen did have their dinner for the seniors up at VZ last week. Somehow I thought it was on the twelfth, it was on the tenth, so I apologize, I didn't make it. Uh, heard they had a good, good time, the people were happy, uh, they enjoyed it. And Lynn, I know, was very helpful in getting that all out to the senior citizens, so she, she certainly helped out the police department on that side of it too, so. Thank you to all the people involved for, um, serving our seniors, but it's very nice. Should we do these licenses next?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
So how do you, you wanna just do a motion to-
You have to read, now when does the new open meeting law, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So let's see, um, we have reviewed a vote to approve and sign the following common victuals renewal licenses for two thousand fourteen. Pentica Regional School District, Bagnell School Cafeteria, VZ Park, two oh one Washington Street, Groveland Airways LLC, one fifty six Main Street. Tea Garden, nine oh four Salem Street, Pub ninety seven, nine thirty five Salem Street, Cafe ninety seven, nine twenty one Salem Street. Cedar Dale Swim Club, twenty Bear Hill Road. Epicurean Feast at Chesterton, at eight sixty Salem Street. Dileos Pizza, one eighty Main Street, Pizza Grove, nine oh eight Salem Street. York Place and Hours, eight Elm Park, Nichols Village, one Nichols Way. Groveland Diner, one Elm Park, with BYOB. That's all of them, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, um, sign to approve all those?
Alright, so moved on all those?
Any questions, concerns? We have no issues, no complaints?
No issues at all.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, I buy a pizza once in a while.
Oh, my pleasure, thanks for making-
Actually, if you wanna wait a minute, if you sign that.
Oh, sure.
Do you wanna sign it?
Oh, I can take it?
Yeah. Save me a stamp.
Alright.
I can only find it.
Project that they were just talking about, where is that?
Um, do you know where Estes Lumber was, along the river? If you're on, if you go straight across where the ridge is, follow the river, it's on your right hand side.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Pizza Grove.
Yeah, I know. Just, I thought I had an idea of where it was in the pile, but, just 'cause I'd read them in that, I was a little bit offside of that.
Yeah.
I'll just write a copy of the sign.
Any others I have to sign?
All of them.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Um, let's see.
If you put it in the small frames, and people do, you can cut out the whole, okay.
Oh, okay, okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a nice holiday.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so I'll go back to number one on the correspondence, Joe requested a ten minute discuss.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be even less than that, I just, uh, I, first of all, Donnie, I wanted to compliment you, um, because you had brought up some concerns that concerned me as well. Uh, my, uh, service on the Government Advisory Council, which is the committee that is under the charge of the Board of Selectmen to study our government, and. We've already done our first charge, as you know, which is to recommend that, uh, we change our board from three to five. And now we've been working on the second charge, and, uh, you had brought up, uh, concern that maybe there might be a, a conflict of interest in my participation on a, any committee. That has been put together by the Board of Selectmen, so, without going into extreme detail-
Actually, that wasn't my concern.
Okay, tell me what your concern was.
My concern was, is there's two selectmen-
Yeah.
On the committee.
Mm-hmm.
Making recommendations back to the selectmen.
Right.
And then voting on it again.
Right, and I, I did, I did bring that up to, actually, two attorneys at the Ethics, uh, Committee, uh, the State Ethics, and there was a precedent that suggests that, um. As long as the committee is not under the direct supervision of the Board of Selectmen, then, um. Board of Selectmen members, whether it's one or two, can participate in such a board and also vote on the same matters. Now, one of the attorneys, however, one of the attorneys, however, did say that, uh, might be, uh, one of the, one of the two, uh, attorneys did recommend that possibly if you wanted to have that looked at by, uh, town council. Because the, 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 uh, concept of under the supervision is subject to interpretation. So if you look at page one of Nancy's, uh, the email here, the Ethics Commission has interpreted the phrase "under the supervision" as meaning that the appointing body has the power to coordinate, direct, and inspect continuously and at firsthand. And then there was a law, excuse me, there was a case, uh, of six or seven years ago, that was used as a precedent. That basically, um, supports, uh, the idea that, um, there isn't a conflict, and, and because the Government Advisory Council is, may not be under the supervision of the BOS. The BOS has appointing authority for the governing, excuse me, the Government Advisory Council, but it doesn't directly supervise it. But I thought, I thought it was a good point that you brought up.
Right, but, but the problem is, is, is two selectmen meeting.
Right.
And are you posting it as a selectmen meeting?
No.
So that's the problem.
Well, we're posting it as a Government Advisory Council meeting.
Right, so you have a majority of the Board of Selectmen on one committee.
Right. Right.
Did you ask them about that?
I did.
Cause I don't see anything here that discusses that.
Well, then, uh-
Is that when they said you should check with town council?
On that piece, yes, we need to check that on town council, and that was why-
I, I agree, I think you should.
Yeah.
I mean, that's all I was worried about, I don't want you guys getting in trouble.
Sure. Oh, I, oh, I understand, and, and you keep in mind that the chain now, we've, we've appointed, you know, the Board of Selectmen has also appointed Betty and I on this committee, so we wanna make sure that we're clear on this.
But you, you and Betty voted that.
Right, exactly.
It, it gets-
That's where the convoluted part of it all is, and I just don't, you know.
So the conflict of interest and issues is, you know, simple things, like we can't, we, we can't vote on matters that would benefit us, our families, or extend our stipends, or our terms and so forth. And then the twenty one A, again, uh, whether or not this board is under the supervision, it doesn't appear that it is under the supervision, so there's enough autonomy that we can vote on matters. Now, the two members is what off, that's what we need.
That was my only concern.
Sure, one of the two attorneys said, only one of the two, one of them said you shouldn't have a problem, but I wasn't sure about that. I didn't get that piece in writing, cause I sent two writing requests and two verbal requests, I only got one right. The other one said, well, maybe on that one you should check the attorney, and, and maybe, and, and I, I don't have authority to ask the attorney.
See, I don't know if it's so much an ethics thing, it's violating the open meeting law.
I understood, I understood.
So it's not so much of an ethics issue.
Yeah.
Because-
Well, there's, there's parts of the ethics that say, like, if it's, uh, uh, if, if it gives the impression of impropriety, right?
Right.
It could fall under that, I don't know.
We don't know.
The way they write their laws, they're confusing just trying to read them.
Right. I, I went through, there's three phases here, conflict of interest, which I'm comfortable we've ruled out. The second is, um, you know, the supervision, is this board under the direct supervision of the Board of Selectmen, which I, I believe it's not. If it was, then we have to go through a process where it would have to be approved at town meeting.
Right.
For, for us to participate. Now, the third element, I couldn't get a hard answer from either, and one of the attorneys suggested maybe a town council should, should consider looking into it, and that is directly what Don has just expressed tonight. And that is, two of us on the Board of Selectmen also being on there.
Right, see, a lot more people call and make comments about the fact that there's two selectmen on the committee.
I understood.
You know, so, again, I mean, it's just, people, anyone that starts to talk about any type of an issue like that, I'm concerned that it's gonna blow up.
Well, that's why I opened this statement with a compliment, that you brought up this issue and I'm, I'm doing the homework, but now I'm, I'm at a roadblock with that last piece. And it's a roadblock because I don't have the authority to authorize the use of our town council for anything, and it's an expenditure, and I, I don't know if-
Well, I mean, they must have, it probably won't be long involved.
If you're willing to do that.
No.
Yes, please.
If you, if you authorize it, I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that.
Alright. Now, let's see. Okay, we have a request from the Fire Fighters Association, which I don't know if I, I'm being a member of that, I don't know if I should participate in this one.
Well, the thing is this week.
Okay, so-
I was just asked the other day, you, you know, I was told that we've always done it, but I looked through all our licenses, we've never been asked for licenses.
Well, I, I mean- Alright, well, the Groveland Fire Fighters Association requests a one day beer and wine license for the fire department holiday gathering on Wednesday, December nineteenth, from eight PM to midnight.
So this is where we have to invoke the rule of necessity?
Necessity, yeah.
I would say, I would be in favor of that if you did.
Alright, so you'd like to make the motion?
I'd like to make it.
Well, before you go over there, I need to know, we need to have a set policy on these special licenses, we're gonna get in trouble the way, if we don't.
What's your concern?
My concern is, is what do you wanna require of them, and I explained this to Bob, because this is what we've been doing with other ones lately. Do you just give them the license blank, do you, you know, as far as, oh yeah, his license, or do you wanna require that they have to have a detail officer? Do you wanna require that they have to have extra insurance, like we're making everyone, you know, those are the things the board needs to consider, so I know when people come in, how to advise them. I think we should have a set policy, sit down and do some, you know, some work session of some of this stuff.
Makes sense.
The insurance company has a real concern about these special licenses, and that's why we did with, like, VZ Park, which is a town building, you know, but we're requiring people in here to provide more than what the town has.
Okay.
Well, what do we do for this week and this particular license, is, is it charged?
Well, that's up to you, I just wanted you to know everything.
Yeah, well, that's a good point.
It, it did come in the last minute, just the other day, and, um, you know, I did look through our past licenses, and we had never given one, whether they've had those parties, you know, I don't know.
Can we, they've requested a, a, I'm pretty sure that-
A town, a property use permit.
Right.
Which they didn't do this time.
I believe they've requested, um, a one day license.
Why, why didn't we give them one?
Tracy, maybe you can correct me, do you remember?
I think we, they have on, on a couple of occasions, I don't remember if it's been every year.
Right. So-
I can't find one.
Really?
I got the stubs for all the ones we've issued.
Cause I know the question, the, the question came up as far as, you know, what, what they would have for detail, and I believe that one of the, um, the firemen was actually on the police department as well.
I know you do these, I know you do these.
So that they, um, they invoked him to be responsible, but, again, I, it's not the way the rest of them are done, so.
I, I didn't, I didn't know how the others were done, that's why I was, I was a little quick on this, cause I, I just assumed we were falling into the same pattern, so I apologize for that.
We require a- No, I know. With all your one day special licenses, you require that a detail officer be present during the four hours that you issue the license.
Yeah.
In order for a detail officer to be present, he's gonna be paid.
Right.
You have made an exception when it was an elderly affair, because they wouldn't be having a lot of alcohol at one time, but personally, from what I've learned from the insurance recently, I wouldn't do that again, no matter who it is.
And this is an eight to twelve event, it's very, it's not, doesn't fit the normal pattern of, you know, daytime.
Right.
So we should, should-
I did, I did question about, what if a call comes in while you're having your potty, and they said, I was told, the chief said that some people wouldn't be, um, participating in the drinking.
Right. Well, uh, can we not ask, uh, why don't we ask for, for that, for the, for the detail?
Well, I don't know if they're, are they able to pay for a detail officer? Or they just wanna use their own person, which, I don't know, what kinda, you know, will, will that cause a problem? Is that a real detail officer to us, you know what I mean?
This is actually timed, and today's the sixteenth, they want this for the nineteenth, we can sign off, I mean, if we have to sign off the day before, and Donnie, uh, Nancy, I'll come here, we'll meet here if I have to.
Yeah, but you have to vote it though.
We have to vote it, but, uh, I, I, I mean, I-
Well, mostly, it looks like a, um, a one day waiver of an insurance thing would be an issue. I don't know how easy those are to, to get, an insurance binder for the-
Um, those, I don't think take very long, personally, people get them, when I tell them they have to have them, I get them right away. But they cost money, Don, I don't know what this group has for, you know, do they wanna spend their money that way? Did, did he talk to you after you talked to me? Because I did tell them all that, tell him all that stuff.
I haven't seen him this week.
You know, I don't even know what the, if the town. I don't know what the town's coverage is for insurance, what it covers, you know, Greg would be probably the one that could show us, but-
Is safety still there?
I just said, are we still here?
That's the only thing I'm concerned about, you know, you're all liable for giving those out if we don't have the proper coverage.
Well, yes.
Good, that's good, I, I'm learning curve for me as well, I think, and realize how, how it's working.
You know, it's-
Cause I've heard that they've been given out before.
Well, no, I've never, I, I can't find a, a license, we, I know Tracy used to fill these out when they have different things, but that doesn't give you liquor, you know.
Okay, there's the difference, yeah. What are we doing at Groveland Day?
Groveland Day, they-
You have to have the detail and all that, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
You're right, you hate to say it, but the easy answer is, it's very simple, we just require the detail, that's the easy, but, and then the, and, but then you don't know-
Provided the town has sufficient coverage on its own.
Right, right, and then we need to know about the coverage as well, so, we'll see if we can get an answer from Greg then, that'd be great.
You know, the, um, Halloween people, what was that, did I keep saying the wrong name, obsessed?
Yeah.
Possessed quest?
Yeah, yeah.
She want, she had a friend that was a detail officer, I mean, a police officer, that would've done it for free. But Bob wouldn't allow it, because he said under the contract, the men could cause a problem with the town, you know, cause they're unionized, you know.
Right, 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 makes sense.
Now, whether they would, you know, I, I don't know, I don't have the answers when it comes to that one. It's probably for four hours.
Yeah, eight to twelve, it's, uh-
Yeah, it would probably be, I wanna say like, it's close to fifty dollars an hour, so two hundred dollars for the cost of the police officer.
Set the last agenda item on the end too.
Yeah, then we're gonna go into the executive session possibly.
We don't have any avenues. We're not covered for anything like that, so.
We're not. That's what I thought, but it's a one side.
So, I would have to say that, you know, without an insurance binder and the same deal that they do, you know, I mean, maybe the police chief would, they could talk to him about what his requirements would be, but. At a minimum, we would have to have an insurance binder, just like we do for the VZ Park use.
Mm-hmm. A million too, a million slash two.
I believe that's what we require, so they'd have to be the same thing.
With a detail.
If the police chief determines that.
Well, he couldn't, he, he told, uh, I was just telling Joe, the girl from Possess Quest had asked for, she has a friend that works for Box, but he was willing to do the detail for free for a Possess Quest potty. And, um, the chief said, no, because of the union, they can't do that. I would, I'm, I'm assuming, assuming that it would be the same for any town, you know, if they.
Right.
Do you need a motion for it?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I suppose we can make a motion contingent on.
Right, subject to them providing the insurance.
Subject to them providing the, the proper stuff, then it would be okay.
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion that the granting of the license would be contingent upon their ability to acquire an insurance waiver and also, uh, police detail.
Not a waiver, a certificate of insurance, yeah.
A binder.
Uh, I'm sorry, binder. We don't wanna waive it, that's right. We wanna bind it, not waive it, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. And, uh, okay, and the, uh.
All right, and under the rule of necessity, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um.
Sorry, I, you know, I didn't like, I don't, I didn't wanna put a kibosh on this, but it's a, a liability for the town.
No, I, I.
If they come through, do we have to still sign something?
Yeah, I have, I'm gonna have you sign it now. It's blank and I won't fill it out unless they give me that.
And we can do it? Okay. All right. And then you'll date it and, and give us copies, okay.
Yeah.
We apologize, you know, we don't have that kind of coverage on our policy and we've required every other group to do it, so.
All right.
Unfortunately today, you know, I remember years ago when other selectmen were here, we'd have a little potty in the office here and.
I never.
We got to go to those.
Yeah, those days are over unfortunately. And to some degree, huh?
Definitely, they are.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yep.
That's good.
Good morning.
Um, well done.
So we just reviewed, we've done the warrants, uh, the first two meetings, reviewed all correspondence, we voted the victuals licenses, um.
Did you sign all those papers for me for the housing authority?
I did. They were here. I think you've got them. Let me just make sure I didn't pick them back up. We didn't need to vote for me to sign that, correct?
Yeah, you did need to vote it.
No.
We do.
I thought you said we didn't.
Must change.
Yeah, I did.
I thought you said just we.
Did you vote?
No, we didn't vote.
No, so.
If you could, just.
What would the, the motion be?
To approve you signing, and I'll fill in the, the grant name, but, uh, the, the capital fund program grant for the Groveland Housing Authority.
Gonna move that, Joe.
I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the capital fund campaign fund.
No, approves the chairman.
Signing, the, the chairman to sign.
The capital fund program grant for the Groveland Housing Authority.
Yeah, capital fund program grant, okay.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we have two, um, executive session discussions and then we will be adjourned for the night. So I wanna wish everyone a happy holiday, um, thank all the town employees for all their services, as well as the appointed committees and elected officials for all their, um, their work for the town. Hope you all have a nice holiday. Okay, so just make a motion, go into exec, executive session under Mass General Law thirty A, section twenty one A, number three, to discuss collective bargaining meeting with Groveland Police and fire signal operators, knowing what police benevolent association local number one one three. Votes may be taken.
Demoria?
Aye.
I'm gonna second that first, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, yes.
Okay.
Demor, you.
All right.
Thank you very much, Tracy.
Thank you.
Well done. I'll see you, have a nice holiday.